Five fifteen on Monday, August twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-one. The Chelsea Falls meeting, no comments. Will everyone please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in thy name, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please note the attendance. Oh, Councilman Haven. And then my conscience is absent. The first item that we have is the introduction of an oath of officer for the, is Nathan Colt. Nathan, Brad, do you have anything?
Yeah, go ahead and step up, Nathan. I'll introduce him as he's talking. This is Nathan Colt. He started with Carroll Police Department today, and he'll begin the academy on the thirtieth, which is next Monday, for seventeen weeks of basic training. Wants completion on that, so he'll come back and do ten weeks of field training with us before he's assigned to a patrol shift. Nathan's originally from Glidden. He moved away for a while and has been back here for the last three years about with his family, so welcome Nathan to the department.
Congratulations, Nathan. We'll go through the police officer oath. Please raise your right hand. I, Nathan Colt.
I, Nathan Colt.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will enforce the laws.
And that I will enforce the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Iowa.
The state of Iowa.
And the city of Carroll.
And the city of Carroll.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of a peace officer of the city of Carroll.
Of a peace officer of the city of Carroll.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Sign that now. Should get that for you. Thanks, Nathan.
Thanks, Bert.
You bet. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the August ninth meeting, approval of bills and claims. Under licenses and permits, we have the renewal of a Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales for Jalisco. And then renewal of a special Class C liquor license, beer wine with Sunday sales, Hunan Chinese restaurant, and a Scott Air pack purchase for the fire department. Is there any discussion with regards to the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for the consent agenda. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Dirks.
Yes.
Seaman.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Fleischner.
Yes.
Phase.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item, which is the oral requests and communications from the audience. And Vicki, I think you have something, I guess. Come up, please. Introduce yourself and.
I'm Vicki Gatch. I am the vice chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm here just to give you a quick update on what we've been up to lately. One thing we're doing is selling these one-year calendars to celebrate the hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the Carroll City Mount Albett Cemetery. It has all kinds of information and pictures about the cemetery in it. And if you want to buy one, they're available at the Chamber office, they're available at the Apothecary, and they're also available from Carolyn after the meeting. The Historic Preservation Commission is also working on plans for activities for next year to celebrate the hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the plating of the Carroll City Cemetery. And we haven't got them all nailed down yet, but you're certainly welcome to join us and to give us any ideas or suggestions that you might have. One of the big activities that we're doing is since December, Carolyn and I have been working on national register nomination for this Carroll City Mount Albett Cemetery. And we've passed all preliminary hoops that they've made us jump through. And October eighth, we'll either meet in person or with Zoom with the State Review Committee, and they will approve, hopefully, our nomination. And from there, it will go to the National Park Service, and once they've approved it, then we'll have our cemetery on the national register.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Vicki. Are there any other oral requests that I'm not seeing any? The next item that we have is a proclamation for the Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week. And this states, whereas direct support professionals, direct care workers, and in-home support workers are primary providers of long-term supports and services for individuals with disabilities in Carroll, and whereas direct support professionals must build close, respectful, and trusted relationships with individuals with disabilities, and whereas direct support professionals provide a broad range of individualized support, including employment, meal preparation, bathing, dressing, transportation, and the pursuit of personal interest and relationships, and whereas direct support professionals provide essential support to help individuals with disabilities to develop and maintain connections with family, friends, and communities, and whereas direct support professionals assist individuals with disabilities in making choices, leading to meaningful, productive lives in their communities, and whereas direct support professional participation in an individual's healthcare delivery contributes to the ability of the individuals with severe chronic health conditions to live successfully in the community, and when necessary, successfully transition from acute healthcare settings into communities and avoid costly care, and whereas direct support professionals are integral to supporting people to live successful lives in their communities and avoiding costly additional healthcare, and whereas direct support professionals help strengthen local communities by facilitating inclusion for people with disabilities. Now therefore, I, Dr. Eric Jensen, Mayor, do hereby proclaim September twelfth through the eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-one as Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week in the city of Carroll, Iowa. We have some presence, and I can give you the proclamation.
Can we do a photo?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sir, congratulations. Thank you. You bet. Get my arm down. Everybody else want a photo?
These are the most important ones.
Yes.
Direct support professionals from New Hope Village.
Okay.
Just a few of our three hundred. We didn't bring everybody today, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. With that, our next item is ordinances, and we have none this evening. So under resolutions, we have the three million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollar general obligation refunding capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-one A. And Laura, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the next step in our process to refund the capital loan notes that were originally issued back in twenty eighteen for the, to fund the library, State Hall remodel projects, and some other park projects at that time. You can recall that we issued these, this debt with the five local banks. And now, since the interest rate environment has changed quite a bit since then, we're looking at refunding these. So this step is the process where council approves the electronic bidding procedures. It's something that state codes as we have to do, and it also says that it's a method, the ways that the interest rate bids could be received is an electronic method, faxed or by sealed bid at City Hall. Then this also, this resolution also approves the preliminary official statement that will be used when we offer these, this debt out to the public and the debt market. And this is a very important step. It's actually required by the U.S. Security and Exchange Commission that we review this and that the information is best, is accurate to the best of our knowledge. I've worked with, or we've worked with PFM and Alders to review some of the more legal side of things. I have reviewed the city, more pertinent city information, but the council is also supposed to review it and deem, is there anything that they see, or is this look accurate to the best of their knowledge? So that's what this resolution does tonight in our next step of refunding this debt. Are there any questions of council or what was presented?
If the interest rates are higher than this, we can reject them and continue with what we got, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, we're scheduled to take the bids on September thirteenth.
Okay.
It'll be that, that's our next council meeting. We'll take the bids in the morning of the fifteenth Senate to council that.
That'd be.
The council meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I read that in there. That's on that. Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that if they, something changes between now and then.
Yes.
The interest rates that are sky high for some reason or another.
Yes.
We can still just keep going.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution approving the electronic bidding procedures and distribution of the preliminary official statement.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Seaman. Fleischner.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Dirks.
Yes.
Phase.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item under the resolutions is professional service agreements for Grand Park Creek Improvements, two thousand and twenty-one. Amendment number two to the agreement. And Jack, please, when you're ready, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we have Dan and Chris from Chev Hattery here to go over first the Grand Park Creek Improvements and then the pedestrian bridge study. So we're thankful they're able to come up for our meeting tonight. As we finalize construction documents for the Grand Park Creek Improvements, a preliminary schedule that Dan and I went over last week was council approval tonight, if so desire. Bid documents be released the twenty-seventh, pre-bid meeting September thirteenth. Then we'll have the public hearing the same night on the plan specification form of contract and probable cause. Cost bids will be due September twenty-first. Approved bids, September twenty-seventh, council meeting. Contracts executed and begin work mid-October. Substantial completion, we're anticipating about a six-week project would be around December fifteenth. So this scope tonight, amendment number two, is for the bid phase services and the construction phase documents. Any questions with what happens in those processes in Shai's reports? They outline schedule one, meeting, answer any reasonable amount of contractors' questions at the meeting. We'll get to that and then construction, basically weekly meetings. They'll be up on site during the construction phases, do all the pay reviews, all those different items that typically are done by the engineer, architect during these processes. Revenue, we did get, look at, or we have allocated seventy-five thousand dollars of loss to it. We did get a REIT grant at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We have received ninety percent of the funds for that. And interest so far is twenty-four hundred, a little over twenty-four hundred dollars. Expenses, master plan, original master plan, twenty-seven thousand. Current professional agreement was twenty-three thousand five. Amendment number one, which was for the pedestrian bridge study, thirty-two hundred dollars. The next amendment number two, again, which is for the bid phasing and the construction documents, sixteen thousand one hundred. They gave us updated probable cause, cost of a hundred and seventy-one thousand five ninety-three. So that leaves total expenses, two hundred and forty-one thousand three ninety-three. There is a shortfall of thirty-eight thousand nine thirty-two, eighteen. Would recommend using funds from FY twenty-two, lost money that is now allocated right now for phase three of the trails project. That is basically what we're suggesting doing, the trails plan is get the plans finished, and then we'll decide. We're so far along the plans, we're going to finish the plans, and then we'll decide where on the trail if we need to move the trail and what we want to do with phase three of the trail. So it'd be our recommendation, approve the resolution from amendment number two to go into the next phase of the Grand Park Creek Restoration Project. Bid phases and construction documents for sixteen thousand one hundred dollars. And Dan can answer any questions as far as, have copy of the plans. Give an overall discussion if you want to talk about the plans, or we can do that at the night of the hearing.
So, Jack, the balance of the one fifty that's allocated in loss for the trails remains if we end up needing the close to forty thousand, correct? So if, okay. Yeah, we have a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes. Yeah, it'll be forty thousand, right? Yes.
So, so we're using this much from that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, somewhere down the road, I think in the near future, we'll have some discussions on trails, if phase three is they're going to go for. We have some other ideas of some other high-end areas we can do.
Okay, great.
Can someone elaborate a little bit on what changed and what caught us on the shortfall?
Do you want to address that, Dan?
I can give a quick overview.
Come on up here, Dan.
Yep.
You can hook up up here.
Some of it is a little bit of timing. These, you know, plan, these plans have been in the works and discussed, you know, for a while, and just with costs, construction costs going up would be some of it.
So my name's Dan Jensen. I'm a civil engineer, Chev Hattery. I've been working on this project with Jack. I'll give you guys a quick overview of just what the project is, and I can walk through some of the budgetary numbers and help you kind of work out where, how we ended up where we're at now. So this is Grand Park. You're all familiar with the city. It's on the stream on the east side of the park. We did a stream assessment, I believe it was last spring, to just look at what some of the conditions are on the stream in terms of the stream being adjacent to Grant Road, and then there's also a sanitary sewer on the west. So there's a number of different locations, kind of sporadically around the, down that stream corridor that have some banks that are sloughing in due to erosion, due to high velocities. And there's also a number of stormwater outfalls, pipes that drain into the stream that have scour cavities around them. So that's generally what we saw in our assessment. And so the project really, really aimed to just fix where those problems were noted and stabilize and sort of kind of protect the infrastructure around there. So we, we tailored our design generally to kind of spot treat those areas with stabilization. And that's how we ended up with, with the scope that we had, that we're at today. So it's about fifteen hundred linear feet of stabilization, which will be rock at the toe of the stream and then vegetation above that, and then also a little bit of bank grading. The banks are fairly steep in these areas. So right now, like Jack said, the opinion of probable cost is around a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's with some construction contingency in our budget numbers right now. With materials and everything, being, being with the conditions we live in, bidding is kind of, can be sporadic, and especially bidding later in the fall. So I think there's potential to have this project come in around a hundred and fifty thousand. It just really depends on who's available locally and what their, what that contractor's schedule is. So mostly, I don't, I don't know that, I can speak to where we, where we necessarily got off. The, the entire scope of the project is really to fix the issues. There isn't necessarily a lot that's going above and beyond. It's to stabilize those problem areas and those outfalls. And I think there was just, I think there's thirteen different stormwater outfalls along that corridor, and they all kind of needed a little bit of attention, along with a number of areas of the slopes.
Is there some of the erosion getting close to Grant Road? That it's, you know, in the next ten years, if we do nothing, could start to interfere with road stabilization along that side, you know?
I think, so it's, it's really tight. There's, there, there's not a lot of room between where the stream goes and, and back to, to Grant Road.
You had one photo there where there was a, emptied sewer drain there, storm sewer, and it's eroding on either side of that, and it looks like it's going back into the bank.
Yes.
That looks like it's toward the roadside, and.
I think that outfall is from the stadium parking lot.
Okay.
So that, that outfall, in my opinion, that one does have a scour, scour cavity behind it that's pretty significant. Want to say we measured it with about eight feet deep back.
Yeah, it looks deep in there, like, yeah.
So that is getting addressed as part of the project. So, yeah, it is, it is tight, I think, especially on the Grant roadside. The longer, the longer you waited, you could potentially have some issues later on. There's not really a lot of room to lay the bank, banks back at, say, like a four-to-one or a really shallow slope, so we're kind of doing the best we can. There's also some, if I'm recalling, I think it's, there's some buried utilities on that side as well that I would probably interested in protecting as well. So I think, long answer, I'd say yes, it, it could potentially at some point be an issue years down the road if you were to do nothing.
When, when we did the tennis courts, if you remember, we had the northeast corner of the tennis courts, the dirt, you know, there's no dirt, it is almost back to the corner of the tennis courts, and I believe it was our staff that reworked that and put the dirt back in. So we've had erosion.
A long era already.
Yeah. I don't remember if we contrived that or if we did it, but.
So we've got threats to the tennis courts then, too, not just forever.
Not, I mean, we fixed it. It, it stayed.
I understand, but if we don't stabilize it, we can see it, work back to it again.
Absolutely.
One, one thing I haven't touched on is, is there is a structural concrete retaining wall that we're proposing on to protect the tennis courts. Right out of the, there's a double box culvert on the north end. So we're going to extend that wall. There's kind of a wood wall there now.
Yep.
You guys have been doing your best to try to maintain that with some stone, but putting a wall in there will really kind of stop that, especially right there by the tennis court where it's, it's good, it's pretty close.
Excellent.
I, you know, I looked at, I saw that middle picture, and I know further on, we're having a discussion about those bridges, but you're getting erosion up to one of the footings there for that bridge there, too, and that's, that's just a matter of time before that buckles.
Yep, so the bridge, underneath the bridge abutment stabilization is included in this project as well.
Okay.
So that's whether or not, Chris is going to talk a little bit about the bridges later on, but whether or not you do anything with the bridges, we're going to stabilize those abutments as part of this project.
Okay.
It will look a lot better, too, when you, I think.
So when you level these banks out, would it be less likely to flood because of that? Because is there more area of water that can be held in there or not? Only so much can go out of that area at a time.
I think with this, so we didn't do a flood study, per se, of this, of this area. I do know it is, it is in the, in the flood plain, and there's been issues with some low-clutch flooding in Grand Park. We, this will increase the capacity of the ditch, but I will, I will say, I think most of that flooding is likely contributed to the downstream culvert where, where that's kind of the inch point.
It's back, it impacts up there, so this channel has. It's going to help. It won't change that either way. It won't make it worse.
Correct. Yeah, so we, we coordinated with the Drainage District Seventy-Seven, and that, that's their main concern, is you're not going to affect the capacity of this channel, and they, they have reviewed the plans and signed off on, on them as well. So we're not going to make it worse.
I also heard you mention a sanitary sewer to the west. Can you single out what that is? I guess I'm not sure what, what you're referring to. Earlier, you said there was a sanitary sewer to the west.
It's a, it's a buried sewer line that's farther into the banks, and I think with some of the erosion on the park side, you could, if those were to continue, you could, you could potentially have a few spots that, that sewer line could become exposed if you did.
Is, is that running north to south, parallel to the stream? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Dan? Any questions for Jack? He's got it. Better than, okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. With that, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution, amendment number two to the agreement with Chev Hattery for the Grand, Grand Park Creek Improvements for a fee of sixteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Dirks.
Yes.
Aiden.
Yes.
Phase.
Yes.
Fleischner.
Yes.
Seaman. Resolution is approved.
Thank you. We have no reports this evening. Trust everyone's read the committee reports. There were some this time. I have no comments this evening. Are there any comments from members of the council? Any comments from the city manager?
None this evening.
Thank you. With that, we will start the Grand Park Pedestrian Bridges Condition Observation and Repair Recommendation Work Sessions. And Jack, when you're ready, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. As we mentioned, Chris is here. We'll discuss the report, some of the findings, some of the recommendations for the pedestrian bridge study again. That was the thirty-two hundred dollars in amendment one that we did with the Grand Creek, Grand Car, Grand Park Creek Restoration. And we just had the report, and I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thanks, Chris, for coming.
Chris Waterman, Struck County, New York, Chev Hattery. We were asked to perform, to perform a site, visual observation of the bridges and determine what, if anything, has been done out there. I guess the two, I mean, listed out here, I'm all bored of just rereading it. Main things were the, the guardrails that are running alongside those bridges, they are not compliant. And I can go up and wiggle them and almost tell they're falling off, and if someone fell into it or children are possibly, or something pushing it, it's going to come off. It's not compliant. Typical, a typical OSHA guardrail that we spec for things are the vertical posts, an inch and a half inch diameter, except four foot on center. With a mid-rail, it's one foot nine up from the surface to the mid-rail, it's also inch and a half, and the top rail is inch and a half, three foot six. There's also additional ash tail requirements for bridges that are on roadways, this would not necessarily be a roadway, but it's something that should, that would be, you'd be consulted as well. I don't remember what, off the top of my head, that is at this time. The other big thing is on the south bridge, I want to picture in here, there's one of the piles that you could see in photo eight, there's, there's a significant rotting in that pile. One, we don't know how five of those go down.
Chris, there's a red dot up on this there. There's a camera that can pick up what you're doing, so we can kind of show what's going on, so the public can kind of see it.
Yeah, if you want to zoom out that top wall.
That's photo seven, we'll zip up to eight. There you go.
Yeah, right here. There's significant, I got, I was able to get up there and knock, and get in there and look at it. It was probably got at least fifty percent or so section loss. Hence, that's why in the recommendation, we figured you, the recommendation is if you want to save, use this existing wooden bridge on the south side, come in and put another pile here and extend on across this crossbeam to tie it, basically takes the place of this pile here. But that's what you would typically do there if you were in, you're going to keep the same bridge and just take place of that, and essentially you don't need that pile anymore.
None of that would be visible from the, as you're walking across the bridge when you know you've done that, correct?
It depends how, it depends how with the equipment, whatever contract you have, it is going to get in there. I mean, it's very steep in there. And, you know, when I was out there with the snow, when I was out there, it was snowy, so it probably didn't help with the footing. But when I was trying to get under there, it was very, and like Dan said, as far as the erosion or anything, it's very steep under there. And that's, that's a very large issue. It's more, I'd, I'd say it's for sure less than a one-to-one slope, which is just not safe as well either, which is contributing to the erosion at the abundance there. But, yeah, I mean, depending on what contract you, they're probably to bring a crane out and we could get it up real close and tight as close as their equipment will allow, and then just add that extension on to the crossbeam there. Those are the main things. On the south, there's the railing and the pile, and then the. Those are the main things, there are, on the south, there's the railing and the pile, and then the erosion underneath there. On one of the stone columns at the corner, the east, the east abutment is the north stone column.
Ten, I believe it is.
Was it north or south? South. One of the, one of the, one of those, those stone, I'm calling them columns with the little wing walls come up, I looked at here.
Yeah, that's that photo ten.
Yeah. That photo, photo ten should be the north bridge, right?
Yeah, there's still the one that's leaning.
Yeah, I guess it shows the same, I guess I'm going to put your picture, it shows the same kind of situation, there's three columns in total, you could see how there's, there's a leaning there, I'm assuming it wasn't built that way, I guess I don't have, I never really got any definitive answers on how any of the stuff was built. The larger concern is the north bridge, because one of those beams has clearly got a large dip in it, and a large deflection. I had a smart level on it, and put it in the middle, and it had a four point one percent cross slope, which I know is over, I believe the ADA requirement is one and a half percent, so it's, it's way over past that, so something needs to be done about that. You start to start to see it along here on photo fourteen, where you can see, start to see the bow in there, and as well as fifteen there, along that south, I'm not sure, I would like to think it wasn't installed that way, so something clearly happened to, to that to cause that deflection there, but I, again, I don't know, I'm not sure, I was just asking for form of visual inspection of this. That, I mean, that's, if I was to design this bridge, it spans over thirty five feet, I wouldn't be using channels personally, I would use a wide I beam, what we call a wide length beam, so that is the most economical shape when it comes to deflection and that sort of thing. That's one of the other biggest concerns, he says, the railings, railings pile, excuse me, railings pile and this beam here that look to be needed to be replaced. The, the north bridge there is awfully rusty, but from what I do, I tried to jab a screwdriver into it, poke at it, it seems to be very superficial, so just cleaning it up is, would suffice, it's not like it's rusting all the way through, not being non-existent. I think that those are the main highlights there. What questions do you have for me, I guess I'm better off, I'm better than that scenario there.
I, I guess when I'm looking at that, is there is there a way that you can keep those columns and wings and just redo the bridge in the center portion?
That, I, I'm not sure, I couldn't.
Be everything completely demolished?
I, I could not tell, I was, I'm assuming just you could, it looks to be, it look, look to be integral together, it would appear that they were put into, they were built independent of each other. And one of the recommendations we have is obviously to take the stone wall, the stone columns down, if those three that are leaning, and then kind of do an investigation, like is there a footing that goes down to frost? Because I, again, I'm assuming they are, they weren't built leaning or askew, so there's, I'm assuming there's not a footing that goes down to frost, which would cause, you know, heaving, and then eventually if they're independent of each other, they could heave and rotate, which gives you the leaning of the columns on top, yeah. So I would assume, I would assume they can be replaced independent of each other with careful construction practices, because they are awfully tight quarters. So I mean, someone gets a little careless, you swing a bucket the wrong way, and you're going to knock something over, and now you're, now you're adding on to the project.
Chris, when you mentioned taking down the, the stone columns, explain what you mean by that, by taking them down, if we would choose to preserve them, how do you retain their integrity and still, you know, make them upright to, so we have a safe bridge and?
So you can have masons come in and not just take the easy approach and knock it over, you can have, they'll take out the mortar and take it down, if you want to get super spendy, they'll, they'll take it down to market, and they can put it back the same, in the same manner they took it down.
So you would actually have to take it apart, stone by stone?
Yes, they can, they can do that, yeah. If that's what you desire, because it seems like that tends to be a theme there, and I was driving through the park there, those the column and wing walls that come off seem to be more than just those two spot, those two bridges, they seem to be elsewhere.
Right, throughout the park, throughout town, Virgin's Park, etc. But these are the originals.
Yes, yeah, that, yeah, I, I understand, I understand the concern there, it's, it's kind of a historical thing.
Yes.
But the, the alternative is, if there is an issue there, they may eventually come down on their own anyway. Because we, again, I don't think they were to be built on, and I, I was holding a leg, I can't remember what the level held up to, but it was, I was like, that is very far, it's a very far out of plumb, so either, either they were built that way, or they moved that way. And I think they moved that way, if you look at some of the other, I'm not sure if I included the photos in here, but I documented photos when, where they're leaning, there's cracks, they go over there wider on the outside, and thinner on the inside, which is indicative of movement, so that one you're, you're something bows like this, you're going to get a larger crack outside versus the inside. And I guess, I don't know if I think it was covered or not.
You're right, I went down, looked at it.
Yeah, 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 it seemed like, at least on the north bridge, on the west side, where I said, they're going to take two down, both of them, you can see on the inside, there's like some hairline cracks that are going to be following around the outside, they open up. So I, I personally think something is moving.
So they are not leaning due to the base?
Well, the base may have moved and caused that, because it's.
But they're also bending because of the structural integrity.
Essentially, these are, if there's a sitting on there, and it starts to lean, and then the paper starts to lean, like that, so that, it could be a combination of everything, everything it's on, because it's just not, if it was down to frost, it shouldn't, it wouldn't, that's the whole reason why I'm on frost, you don't get the heaving and the movement, the soil moves around, but the footing itself doesn't.
Were you looking at replacing all the wood on the walkway?
Uh, no, but most of the, most of the wood planks look great.
They look great downed homes.
Yeah, there's just a couple.
What about the trusses underneath, or the beams underneath?
That's on the, on the wood one?
Yeah, the bigger attachment.
Visually, they didn't, they didn't appear to be a concern, they were, they were solid when I knocked on them, there was no visual, you know.
No rotting or anything there?
I, from what I could get to, I couldn't get out to the middle where the water would probably be, you know, there's a bit of a slope, so all the water would be pooling in the middle, and I wasn't quite tall enough to reach up there and see, what I could get to from the abutments, it was all solid when I knocked on it. And never, nothing ever brought really concern there on that one.
Anybody know how old these are?
They were built in nineteen fifty four.
Nineteen fifty four.
Could have been this.
Pardon?
Might be the back shelf too.
It's, it's all.
Yeah, I saw that somewhere.
May I show a picture? You talked about what they looked like originally. This is from nineteen fifty three. And that, that's the north bridge.
That's the north one?
And they are straight.
So.
Can you put that underneath?
Where's the sheet, you take one of your sheets, you probably put that under.
Oh, sure, there you go.
Carol, you have pictures of this. The one, the last one.
There it is.
Yeah, it's up there later, you also have it on here. What's on this big one right here?
The one that I just, yeah, that I just sent you today. Oh, okay.
Could you read this, this is mentioned by Mike this morning, I might not say this right, Mike might want to correct me, but can you leave the columns, maybe straighten them out, and then put the bridge with new footings, and the bridge just be separate?
Can you say that again?
Yeah, so you leave the columns on place.
As is.
Yep, and maybe you straighten them out if possible, and then create the bridge with its own footings and have it redone with that.
Yeah, we can, those can be designated, you know, just not in the scope of the project, I just, I would just let you know that, you know, you get, you get a careless worker, it may end up being forced into, becoming the scope of the project, because somebody has a mishap or mistake or something happens.
While they're doing the reconstruction.
Reconstruction.
Not going.
You're slinging in something to drive a, a new pile, a new wooden pile in next to that bridge, and they're going to have to get real close proximity to those existing the walls that are there, so if you're trying to get as close as you can to that, the east abutment on the south bridge, they may things happen, and it is what it is, how, it is what it is, sometimes things can happen, I'm just letting you know where that it may happen.
And one question on that line is, as they're putting a piling in, I mean, that itself, they're driving it into the ground.
Yeah.
In so many conditions you were mentioning, I mean, how could that affect kind of the integrity of these?
Oh yeah, if it's not done, if it's not done to frost, if it's not designed, you know, there's not a proper footing, then those vibrations could also cause, if there's rotation happening or cracking occurring in the mortar joints between all the stones and vibrations, which is additive.
I'm going to just throw this out there, these things are about ten feet tall. What about a brace in the north side to the south side on each one, across the top, to keep it from falling over?
The hard part is, I don't know what's inside of it. If there's any sort of structural integrity to the, or it's just straight stones. Because typically, you know, on a masonry building, you'll have your CMU, CMV backing, or steel, some sort of steel backing to be, that's actually the structural integrity of the wall itself. So in this condition, we, you know, if we were to build something like this, we would put, you know, I'd probably put CMU block in the side behind it, and then the stones would merely be a facade. I'm assuming these are probably built just, you know, just stone, so there's really no, nothing structurally there to brace it to, it's just going to put tension, you know, where it's, where it's bent, you're going to put tension in the opposite side and probably crack the mortar on the opposite side as well. That was, that was something we talked about in the office, as far as how to fix it, because I mean, like that one photo showed, clearly it's we're leaning, and it's like, well, can we just push on it the opposite direction, but it's probably far too brittle to be doing that.
I mean, I guess I'm at that point where I think we need the bridges, we need bridges down there, but to what expense? You know, I like what these are, the aesthetic value of it, but, and if you're talking, is it five hundred thousand? A million? Take that all apart?
I did, Dan asked me to just have a quick guesstimate as far as what would it cost, and I figured between the two bridges, just rough guesstimate, I mean, I was like, a hundred twenty thousand to a hundred fifty thousand. A new, if you're putting a wholly bridge, it typically costs between a hundred fifty or two hundred fifty dollars a square foot. So then it's dependent upon how wide, how long. So then one of the things we listed in here though is, you know, especially that north bridge, when I measured at the base, it's only four foot, three and a half feet or something like that, and then as those, those rebar guardrails paper up, it's down to like less than four feet, so like when I was walking through, it was like, you're definitely only fitting one person through here, so if you're trying to flow a mass, a amount of people through from like to or from a game, football game or anything going on there, it's, it's gonna fall out of line. Is that a hundred twenty, a hundred fifty, is that to repair? Repair, yes. To repair.
Repair, repair, fixes that are.
Do you have a figure on new? New, again, I, I, a hundred fifty to two hundred fifty dollars a square foot. I'm not, it just dependent upon, I'm assuming you're not going to put back, especially like the north one, you want to probably put two flows of traffic, so people can be coming and going, or when you get a large amount of people, you could fit more than one person side by side going through it. And then a hundred twenty, a hundred fifty for repair, that's for both, not, not each? Both, yep.
And that would include the stone?
That's, yeah, I, I can't remem, I was estimating that, I thought that the stone would take, each one would take five, roughly five to six thousand dollars, I was anticipating.
For each?
You, you take one down and figure out what, what would they have for footing on it or something?
Five to six for each. Is there some way, Chris, if, if we would go that route, that when the stone pillars were reconstructed, that, that we would use a technique that's modern to make sure they remain stable? And you know what I'm saying, like, I don't know if there's a beam in there now, or if it's like you said, all.
Oh, you mean they're.
Yeah, to put them back together, but.
Yeah, there's, I guess that's, that's something, yeah. You mean like, yeah, like how I was saying, put us actual structural wall or backing inside of there, how you would typically, how you typically could use conventional modern day construction techniques while getting the old book.
Yes.
Yeah, so they stabilize and, and it's a long-term investment, not a short.
Yeah, that's just a matter of putting enough concrete under there, so you can put a CMU, be forced CMU wall behind it, and then being able to stack the stone around it, just like you would with any sort of block or brick veneer.
Right across the road, they did that in the football field.
Did they, they put the, they put the stone up and there was no stone there?
So it can be.
Yeah.
Well, this article mentions that native stone was placed over the original blocks for the shelter house. Yeah, so, yeah, right, in the bottom, yeah, that's why I asked.
Yeah, maybe, and you said it was, it was original stone placed over original block?
That, for the shelter house in the park.
But you said stone over block?
Yes, that's what.
I guess I'm not familiar with that article.
No, it's right in the bottom. I didn't know that.
Yeah, I guess I, I, like I said, I just assumed it was built from way back when, and they just put the stone.
Stone will cover the cement block structure, which the firemen erected. The very last sentence.
Yeah, so maybe it is built a bit more of a, more, more conventional day techniques, but I just don't know, without, without opening, without opening.
It's like renovating a house, you don't know what you're getting into when you open it up.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to make, you can make educated guesses.
That's very reasonable, thank you.
So if we move forward, one, or, how do I want to say, the cost of redoing these compared to the cost of tear them apart and start all over and reconstructions, like they did in the football field, your charge would be quite a bit more to give us both scenarios?
Well, they, they would be paying us to put together documents to tell them how to put it back together. I guess is what we would, you know, we would help, we would be the agent, okay, what do you want to put back up, what, how do you want it to look? And then, me structurally, I would make it stand up and look in, not, not cause any more of the problems where there's beams deflecting improperly and improper guardrails and that sort of thing, but we can make it work with the council or parks or whoever to make it look aesthetically pleasing in the way that, way that, the manner that you want, with modern, all the safeties of modern construction.
I guess if we're trying to make a decision, I would like to know what it's going to cost to refurbish what we have or brand new. But I think that's going to be a huge charge for you to do that, we need to know that too.
Yeah, that's I guess I'd have to ask, I just do the work, I don't put together the contracts, so.
But if you could go back and.
That'd be, oh, that's something I can come back, we can have, for sure, reach out with, and give you an estimate of what that would cost.
That's something Craig would do.
The, the who?
Craig Erickson, my D.
Yeah, Craig, Craig or Luke, Luke Manat was the one that came down and talked to, he got me and, me and Alex involved, the other signature on this report.
I think he's just the engineer.
I'm just, I'm just a guy, I'm the guy that does the work, Alex is the actual licensed guy that signed, that signed off on all of my work, he, I was going to set up here to do all the visual studies. But I'd be the one doing the actual designing.
Well, you did say that with the, on the high end, it would be, for completely new, it was two hundred dollars.
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, yeah, typical, typical pedestrian.
Where are we looking at here, do you know that?
Uh, very, I guess that's, that's an open, open-ended question.
Spreading out, are we deciding to make it?
Yeah, yeah, the big thing is not necessarily the length, it's how wide, you know, like, two flow traffic, three, four.
Okay.
And I, and I didn't measure it, but it sure looks like the south side is a little bit wider than the north.
Yeah, the south one was, the south one I think was worth like six foot or so in width, I mean, we're designing the new pedestrian bridge down in, in one, it's like
fourteen feet.
It's fourteen. Fourteen feet wide. These, these two bridges.
I was just looking, these are roughly about forty foot span, so if they, if traditional like multi-use trails, maybe you're talking about like a ten foot wide trail. So. Um, so, quick math that I just did, a two fifty is a hundred thousand per construction cost of, uh, per bridge. Um, on, on a totally new bridge and that would, that would be, um, demolishing. And maybe you could, maybe you could save the columns, uh, to some, to some degree. Um, but essentially ripping everything out and redoing it, you're looking at roughly maybe two hundred thousand plus, plus a design fee. A design fee on a, um, again, I'm not a structural engineer, I'm gonna talk really generally. On a design fee on a, on a new pedestrian bridge is gonna be, uh, fairly economical in that we'll, we'll use, uh, standards. There's, you know, we could, there's prefabricated bridges that are forty feet long. Um, it'd be a totally different aesthetic, you know, I think you guys have probably seen it, whether that's a, like a steel truss, truss bridge or something like that. It would feel modern, um, and maybe that's ten foot wide. Versus I think you're looking at probably comparable construction costs for a repair. But I also think our professional services is gonna be more complicated because I think not only are we gonna have to design the repairs, but we're gonna have to investigate these things a little bit further to figure out how do we fix it. You know, it's a lot easier for us to say, get rid of this, start fresh, here's a new bridge. Um, and that's, I think that's, that's a hard question to answer.
Yes, yeah.
Um, in terms of, it's hard to answer the question of how much does it cost to repair when we don't necessarily have a, have an understanding of what's going on under, under the ground in terms of footings or anything like that. But that's, um, you know, I think, Chris, we could work on, uh, something to, to get really high level, uh, costs that you guys could think about. I don't think that would be too much effort. Obviously, there's gonna be those little, before you start, uh, doing investigation, there's gonna be asterisks by anything. Cause if you run into something that you didn't anticipate, that could totally change how that might.
I guess when I look at that from, you know, just from the perspective of what we've got here is that we need, we need to consider the safety of everybody that's going across that thing. And I sit and I look at, there, there's a, probably an inexpensive way to put in a, a, a good bridge. But when I look at those stone columns, that's the aesthetic appeal to what that environment is down there. That I, I guess I'd rather see more, get a good solid bridge as inexpensively as you can. If there's a way to keep the aesthetic stones, to keep what's going on down there, keep that environment, I, that would be something that I'd be interested in seeing. I don't know what everybody else would look at, but, um, I use those bridges down there and they're, I, that rebar is, I'm sure it was straight before, in, in nineteen fifty-four. But it's all bent and contorted and you really gotta watch when you're walking through there, cause there's snags in there and it'll catch ya. There's some spots in there, so I.
It's all welded together though.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
It's not like you, but it's, it is, you know, you can move those things back and forth a little bit.
Do you have any idea what it would cost to do more of a custom bridge? I mean, you're talking about, you're giving prices out for prefab bridges. I mean, are there comparable? Obviously, there's gonna be design implications. Um, but I mean, if we wanted to, I mean, this kinda has a suspension bridge kinda feel to it, even though it's not that. Um, there's kinda smaller, um, dowels that, you know, the, the guardrail system is, is smaller than you see in kind of new, um, kind of prefab bridges that you can buy. I mean, what, do you have any idea what cost implications would look like?
Off the top of my head, no, I'd have to go back and do a little bit of research on past projects, that sort of thing before I put that for you.
Has Shai done like custom bridge stuff, or have you always used kind of off-the-shelf?
We, uh, we have not in our office. We have in, uh, in our Moline office, that's where they, they have a lot of our, our, all of our pre-itschigay right now.
Okay.
They do, they do a special one-off custom trusses, custom everything.
We'll start stuff out of our office, we've pre-fabbed a lot, a lot of trail bridges. We also do a lot of, um, DFT bridges. Um, and some of the custom ones I know, like our Moline office did I seventy-four grade Joker, uh, Mississippi River.
And certainly not advocating custom person, I'm sure I'm trying to get to what, what's kind of that cost implication? Just so the council can understand what that is.
That's something, that's something I could reach out to them over there and get more clarification, maybe what's the cost? That's A, B, or C, kind of on like a, on an apples-to-apples, so we usually go to like a per square foot basis.
I'm just curious if anybody here knows what the columns cost at the baseball stadium when they. Any idea?
I don't.
Okay. You see what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Kinda curious what this is.
Ron.
Was I watching what I'm in?
Ron did a great job.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm thinking, I'm not against having someone put the same type of stone back up if it's less expensive than. Trying to preserve what's there.
Football stadium too.
You'd never notice the difference.
No. I'd encourage you guys when you leave town to look at the baseball stadium and the football stadium.
I think, I think that's a good option.
Right. We're actually gonna go down and, not to add more to this project, but, um, the bench out. You know, I'm having a look at the bench out. It needs some looking at and that, so we'll go over to the football field too.
I think to, um, to give the aesthetic you want and to remain, uh, economical, I think the thing, I think what you just said is probably the way, the way to go. I can, I can't put a number on it, but if you were to take those columns, put in a, a modern bridge, whether that's a, a prefab truss bridge or even a, even like a concrete slab bridge, you could stamp the concrete to make it feel like, uh, wood planks if you wanted to do that. Um, you could do, uh, steel with wood planks if that's the way you wanted to go. Um, and then I would, I would say redo the, when you, when you redo the abutments, um, which are underneath that support the bridge itself. Whether you do those con, probably do those concrete and have those columns set integral with that and then just put the stone.
And put the stone down outside as a facade. I think, you know, I, I think you're gonna get a little bit longer, uh, use out of it and probably a lot safer use for a longer period of time.
Yeah.
Especially the. Yeah.
See, I think the reason there's so much of that stone in this town is because there was so much available, because there still is. And there's, there's lots of places you can get it from.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we talked about that with the, uh, the street signs. I mean, the guys had all sorts of stones.
All sorts of people.
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, you, you come get it, you can have it, you know, so.
Do you have some stone for, for us, Hubert? Do you have some stone for us, like the?
I've been down there numerous times. The stone is not great.
No, no, it's the grouting, yeah.
It's very terrible.
So it's not like we're gonna get rid of, really get rid of these and bring in different stones.
Right.
There is nothing wrong with the stone.
We just rebuild it with the stones.
It's the, the grout and, and that's what we have going on at the cemetery.
It's almost like a tug-of-warning project where you're, like, you're taking it apart.
Stabilizing it and getting it back together. The stones are, are in great shape.
Yeah, it's not like we have to go search for the stones. They're there. They just need to be taken apart, cleaned, restored.
And the, and the design.
Yeah.
The design is typical of the time. And they called it rustic naturalistic design. And it was promoted by the National Park Service. That, by the way, started on August twenty-fifth of nineteen sixteen to bore you with history. But, um, anyway, that's, that's what's so unique and that's the, the rustic natural, naturalistic design work that is throughout our town, throughout the parks. So, uh, yeah, if we can figure it out, it'd be nice to preserve the, the.
Stone abutments.
Yeah, the columns.
Columns, yeah.
They, they enhance the bridge.
Anything else? Do you kind of have an idea of direction? Like that's what we were supposed to do, accept the report, be in motion to accept the.
I know there's some members of the public that have an interest, maybe ask if there's anyone in the public that'd like to ask questions.
Was it?
Do you guys have any questions back, Vicki?
Vicki or?
Just hopefully you can preserve the historic value of it because it really does fit in with the whole grand park athletic field aesthetic around there. And the more we can preserve that, the better, because we're really good at tearing down, but not necessarily preserving, if you will.
And the mayor, the mayor was right, we've gotta do something.
Yeah.
You know, there's thousands of people walking across those bridges now, especially with the football stadium and everything else. That's the, probably the largest tourist attraction our community has.
Yeah.
Um, I hate that, one of those babies to, and I slipped those pictures you took.
Sorry.
I may not walk across the.
That, that north bridge seems to wobble a lot.
I'll stay on the south one. But I mean, yeah, it's, something has to be done and if we can preserve the historic nature.
Can we leave it open now?
I don't, I don't think it's an issue, no. I don't, it doesn't seem, and when I was walking on, yeah, it moves, it wiggles because not to bore you with any science, it doesn't have enough second moment of area, it doesn't have enough mo, enough.
There's not enough momentum.
Yeah, it doesn't have enough, um, mass to resist what, what you want it to do. It's unders, it's undersized. But no, it's not gonna fail. It's been, I mean, it's been around for sixty years. It's not, it's not, it's not on the brink of collapse. I put this back up.
The only comment we made was, maybe you should fix the bridge before you stabilize the banks.
Stabilize the bridge.
Yeah.
We have a grant, you know, that's for the bank stabilizations paying the majority of it, but.
Are you gonna tear up any of what you're gonna do and do things twice?
I, I don't, uh, personally think so. Um, most of the, you know, we do have some localized areas where we're stabilizing the banks directly underneath the bridges. I think, uh, you know, a year or two down the road, you're looking at a bridge project, you can, you, the contractor may have to move some of that and put it back. Um, but you've already bought the stone, it's already there. Um, and it's a relatively, I mean, we're talking about stabilizing fifteen hundred linear feet of the stream versus a ten-foot bridge on either side. Um, I think it's, I think it's minimal. But yes, a little bit, not totally redoing it, but maybe moving it, installing the bridge and then putting the stone back.
It's not, it's not.
Thanks, guys.
That was a good point, you.
Would there be a way to tie this work together? Or not?
If you wanted to, I mean.
You had to delay it.
You heard what we talked on schedule.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not fixing these bridges this fall.
Fall, okay.
We could probably, it could maybe be a next spring thing, um, if, if there was.
But I think you're on course with, with expenses for here, yeah.
He's gotta spend, we gotta spend the grant money. And the other, the other thing, so what's nice, I didn't talk about it, but what's nice about doing a stream project in the fall is usually you don't have to necessarily worry about spring flows, you don't have to worry about snow melt. Um, we have to do that stream project when it's at low flow.
When it's at low flow.
And the last thing you wanna do is, is start tearing into that in March and April come and it rain and rain and rain and you're gonna have a bigger problem than you have if you're not, you're not there.
You get flow over spare spots that you've just unearthed and uncovered.
Correct.
And you're gonna have a bit more trouble, yeah. Okay.
So, um, my, what, what I'm hearing and what, and we can, I'll talk more with Jack on this. I think what might be helpful, the most helpful for the council would probably to be, to see some, some, some costs on if we keep the aesthetic and replace the bridge, uh, rough construction costs, what is that? What do we get? Versus what if we just, what if we took it out and here's what we get? And, um, and then, because I don't, I don't think it makes sense to have you guys make that decision without knowing what it's gonna cost. Cause there's obviously, there's a static type fits to the other one. Uh, maybe, maybe they're comparable at the end of the day. Maybe it's a little bit more expensive, but you get what you want and, and that's what makes the most sense. But that's what I think would be the best tool for you guys to make that decision.
Hey, we need a Dan poll.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Do you have a motion to accept the report?
No, I just talked.
It's a discussion, so, that's, anybody have any other questions during the anger?
I mean, certainly if the council wants, we can accept it and then if there's correction.
Yeah, that way you can.
I think we have correction.
That way we got it.
Yep.
From a legal perspective, yeah. Um, entertain a motion to accept the, uh, uh, report from Shai Hattery with regards to the, uh, Grand Park Bridge Project. There's a motion in second, uh, no other discussion. We'll go and vote please.
Jurs?
Yes.
Stephen, your discussion?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, if there's nothing else, I'll look for motion to adjourn.
I'd like motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion in second. We'll go and vote please.
J, yes.
M, A, R, V, S.
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.